At this time, I'm going to officially call the meeting to order. And I would like to have Commissioner Brian Booth say the invocation. And we did lose Judge Wayne T. Rutherford last week. Wayne was the longest-serving judge in the history of Pike County. He served in five different decades. Remarkable political career. And I think Mr. Gary Sloan's article about Judge Rutherford, that he was an icon or legend in Pike County politics. He is responsible for a lot of the things that have been done here, including starting Pike County Solid Waste, our senior citizen centers, our volunteer fire departments, our library district. And it is a tremendous loss. We've lost two former judge executives in the last three months. And it's a lot of history of our county that has passed with the passing of Judge Rutherford and Judge Desk. And so if Commissioner Booth would say the invocation, and we will have a moment of silence in memory of Judge Wayne T. Rutherford thereafter. Commissioner?
Dear heavenly Father, we come before you this morning. I worship this court, dear heavenly Father, that we conduct the order, dear heavenly Father, in the way that you'd want us to, dear Lord. Go with us throughout the remainder of the day, dear heavenly Father. And Lord, watch over those, dear heavenly Father, that's passed on lately, dear heavenly Father, since life, there's all the time someone passing here lately, dear Lord. Go with us, dear Lord, Jesus. Amen. Amen.
If you would, let's honor Judge Rutherford with a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Robertson?
Here.
Commissioner Tackett?
Here.
Commissioner Booth?
Here.
We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask my dad, Ray Jones, who's here in the courtroom. He is a United States Marine Corps combat veteran that fought in Vietnam. And I would like to ask him to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if he would honor us with that.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which sustains one nation, undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Thank you, sir. Next item is approval of the minutes from August 18, 2020, and September 1, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any question or discussion? See, no, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Now, before we get started into the items on the agenda, I would like to ask Mr. Ronnie Hilton, if he would come up to the podium. Now, he's awful bashful. Ronnie, come on up to the podium real quick. The fiscal court would like to congratulate you for winning the Southeast Kentucky Chamber of Commerce 2020 Junior Williamson Memorial East Kentucky Ambassador Award. For those of you who don't know Ronnie, he oversees Pike TV. He is a United States Army Combat Veteran. He is an avid outdoorsman, loves to fish, and does a tremendous job for the people of Pike County. And big asset, Ronnie. We appreciate everything that you do, not only for Pike TV, but for Pike County. You're truly an ambassador for Eastern Kentucky and Pike County, and the honor is well deserved. Congratulations.
Probably dressed a little nicer if I knew you was going to do that.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is an update on the Pike County landfill by Mr. Tom Ramsey and Ms. Simone Smith from Geo-Cyntech Consultants. Tom, Simone, would you come on up to the table, please? And we need to make sure that you space the microphones out. Fabian, if you would assist with that. And Tom, while you're having a seat, now that we have folks tuning in, I want to just advise the folks here who are tuning in on Pike TV or maybe watching on Facebook that we are practicing social distancing. We do have everyone in the courtroom, other than the person speaking, will be wearing a mask. So, Tom, if you can take the mask off, Ms. Smith, while you're giving the presentation. Tom, I'm going to turn the floor over to you. There's a lot of information that we need to update the citizens of Pike County on. Make sure the green light's on the microphones. You're in town to check on the landfill, and there's quite a bit of work taking place up there. I think Judge Hickman, who is out, is tuned in. Is that correct, Ronnie? Is he... Reggie, can you hear me there?
Yes, seeing Judge.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you're there. So, the brains behind the solid waste permitting on behalf of the county is with us on Zoom. I wanted to make sure that he was there. He had to be out of the court meeting today for personal reason, but he is tuned in. So, Tom, you have the floor, and please proceed, sir.
Thank you, Judge Jones. It's been about six months since the last time I was here, getting a chance to visit the site. Obviously, with the pandemic, there's just been a tremendous impact associated with that, with everyone. Just as a background, I do know in talking with the folks here, with Reggie and Larry Hensley and others, about the difficulties that the county has been experiencing the last few months with the pandemic, specifically with regard to the amount of waste that's being generated in the county. Residential waste has exploded, and your experience here is very consistent with what we have seen with all of our public clients as a company. And generally, residential waste volumes are up maybe 30% to 50%, pretty much nationwide. And so, a lot of our public clients are having to deal with that impact and associated budgetary impact and just planning for solid waste services. So, if, I guess, if misery loves company, there's plenty of company out there for Pike County.
So, what we're experiencing with the significant increase in residential trash is something you're seeing across the country?
Correct, yes. Both in urban areas and rural areas, both.
Any basis for why or reasons why, or is it just people being locked in their home and deciding to clean everything out?
From what I've seen from industry publications, it's several reasons. One is that people who would otherwise be at work for a large part of the day, and then maybe their lunch trash and other things like that being generated at their workplace, they're now at home all day. So, there's a fraction of additional waste being generated there. Also, it appears that folks are taking the extended time at home to do the sort of cleanouts and renovations that they've never had time to do. There's just a tremendous amount of bulky waste, the kind of stuff when you clean out your garage, or your attic, or your basement. And then also, I do know from some of the published articles that, like, the home improvement chains have had very high sales, and they're relating that to people, again, doing renovations at home that they might not have had time to do otherwise. So, it's kind of a perfect storm that has resulted in a lot of extra waste being generated by residents.
And, you know, we asked our customers, Pike County Solid Waste customers, to keep that in mind, that after we basically lost all the inmate labor, we were forced to completely reroute the system, and it's actually working better. We've replaced the inmate labor with actual employees. We believe that we're going to be able to recover some of that expense on the CARES Act money that's been allocated to Pike County. But going forward, we hope that we're in a financial position with Pike County Solid Waste, not to have to go back to using inmate labor, because I do think our service has improved, because there's more accountability with actual employees than opposed to you, you know, as opposed to using inmate labor. Inmate labor saves money, but there is a question about the extent of the service that you get from inmates, for obvious reasons.
Yes.
So, we have asked people to keep that in mind. We are continuing to see a substantial increase, and that's really putting a pressure on the system, even though we are adapting. And as you know, we've had trouble with crews getting done. It's taken a lot longer, but we are starting to see most of the crews get done. Judge Hickman, usually by... I think we've got Mr. Morley here. Chuck, would you come up to the podium, please? We are starting to see, and Reggie, you can jump in here, but we're starting to see the crews get done a lot earlier. Part of that's the fact that we've made sure they've got equipment to work with. We've purchased 11 new vehicles for Pike County Solid Waste in the last year and a half.
Yes.
And I think that that's a substantial reason that we're able to be as efficient as we have. We're not having the breakdowns. Chuck, are our crews getting done a little earlier than they had been?
Yes, sure, Judge. Last week, they had a real good week. Wednesday been their latest day, they cut down to about 6:00. We're not having the breakdowns. Chuck, are our crews getting done a little earlier than they had been?
Ronnie, is that feeding back through? Okay.
Yeah, they have cut their time significantly with the help of the new equipment. We're still having a little trouble due to COVID. You know, if we have somebody that's off sick, of course, it's what normally is off a couple of days turns into being a week or more event, because they have to be tested for COVID. And that's our real issue right now, is if we have somebody sick, we've got their offer quite a while, extended time. But things are getting better.
So, the other issue is we were working a lot of overtime because of the rerouting, the stress from having people off because they've either been quarantined or tested. Not as much equipment breakdown, correct?
Correct, yeah. We're doing a lot better on equipment.
What time was the latest that we had crews finishing last week?
6:00, which is on Wednesday of last week.
And that's going to be important, Tom, as we get into October, November, December, because we don't want crews on the road after dark, so.
Correct. We've cut the time significantly, because there was Wednesdays that was 10:00. We had some guys coming in as late as 10:00 on Wednesday nights. And the new equipment's, you know, cutting the time back. We still got a little ways to go.
I agree. I couldn't, I mean, I, at least with regard to the timing for that new equipment, it was very fortuitous. I just think of the condition of the equipment when I first became involved here in Pike County in January of 2019, and just seeing how difficult it was, the number of breakdowns, the number of times when people just struggled to finish routes. And that was before the pandemic and the additional waste. If you'd been in that circumstance today with that old equipment, it would be an absolute nightmare. So, it is good news that that equipment was able to be purchased and put into service.
Did you get a chance to see any of it, Tom?
I have. When I was out at the landfill for most of the day on Monday and about half the day yesterday, spent a lot of time with Larry Hensley. And yeah, so while we were there, we were able to see the equipment coming in.
It's been a great help.
Sure it has.
We have one little technical issue. Judge Hickman says he cannot hear Ronnie, the speakers. Is there something we can do about that? Well, he may have to find some earphones or figure it out, but we'll work on that. So, Tom, tell us where we are on the permit application for the landfill expansion.
Certainly. As we've talked before, the permitting for expansion of the landfill is a four-part process for anybody in the state. The first part is to get the local approvals. That was completed last year. Second part of the permit is the notice of intent to permit, which is essentially the preparation of a work plan that's needed for the soil and rock investigation that has to go on for the expansion. The notice of intent to permit has been going on for about 12 months now. We are expecting to receive our final approval from the Department of Environmental Protection here within the next month. We had a number of rounds of comments with them. They had, seemed to be very concerned with the potential coal, what the coal seams that are out there, and the potential that they might have had some deep mines on the site. We did our best to try to convince them that that was not an issue, but they seemed to be focused on it nonetheless. So, anyway, addressing a number of comments with them, that notice of intent to permit will be completed here. We're expecting it next month. So, with that, we're moving forward with the next step of the expansion process, which is the administrative application. And in that portion of the project, we complete the soil and rock investigation, prepare a conceptual design for the expansion that goes to the state, and then a number of other submittals that have to go with it. For example, one that I know that Reggie Hickman and others have been working diligently on is to obtain the mineral rights for the area where the expansion is.
And we're going to talk about that here in a few minutes. Just so the public understands, we're now down to the point where there's probably, what, less than three years' space in the Pike County landfill?
Yes. I, in looking at the site yesterday with Larry, and based on the volume review we did this spring, as well as just sort of eyeballing it out there, I'm comfortable that you've got space through 2022, but after that, it's going to be difficult. Things are going to be very tight.
Hold on one second, Tom. Get to hear me twice. I don't know what you want to hear me twice. Hey, Reggie?
Yeah, I've got it off.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's feeding back through. I apologize.
I understand.
So, Tom, you know, just so the public understands, and this is why some people said, you know, you came into office, the first thing you did is, you know, start messing with solid waste. Well, this is the reason why, because if we had waited until this year or next year, I think we would be in a situation where you would have a landfill at maximum capacity and wouldn't even be in a position to even try to start an expansion. And I think that would be absolutely a major blow to a lot of people when they realize how much it was going to cost to haul this stuff to Ashland or London.
Correct.
So, now, we're going to be, it's my understanding, we're going to be starting core drilling this week. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the core drilling is something that the state requires as part of the permit process?
Yes, that's correct.
So, once that's done, hopefully that'll be done this week, what's the next step once the core drilling's done?
Well, we've actually got several weeks of core drilling left to go. That was related to one of the many comments we've got from the state from the notice of intent. So, but that should be done. We are expecting within a few weeks. We are then preparing the rest, taking the information we gather from that, preparing the rest of the administrative application, which our target on that is to have that complete between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and then immediately submit that to the Department of Environmental Protection for their review.
Now, when we went down to Frankford in January, February of this year, and met, it was very clear that it would take at least two years to get the permitting process done.
That is correct.
And so, we're now substantially into that process. Still a lot of work to be done.
Yes.
And when do you anticipate that we will be ready to start construction on the expansion?
I would anticipate that the permit would be received sometime in late 2022 at this point, and then we would immediately go into construction at that point for the first phase of the expansion.
So, just to be clear about this, we are on a tight timeframe?
Yes, we are.
And if we can't get the construction of the expansion done or started, before we're starting to near maximum capacity, we do have the option to go to Phase 6.
Correct.
But we're better off financially if we don't have to spend the money to do Phase 6, and we can go directly to the expansion?
Yes, because Phase 6 is not particularly efficient with regard to the amount of disposal space you'd get for the money that you'll have to spend to construct the cell.
So, that's why it's important that we are able to get the permit through as soon as possible. Now, we did get some news, and this is something that you're going to have to explain to me. We budgeted $70,000 as part of the permit process for core drilling, but the state tripled or doubled, tripled, I guess, the number of bore holes. I mean, there's been a landfill there for 20, 30 years. They should know that, I mean, if you already got a landfill there, why are they saying that you've got to do all this core drilling now, when we didn't have to do it when the original landfill was constructed? And basically, since we're going back over the existing footprint, that makes no sense why we're having to do that.
Well, we were, that was exactly the argument that we were making when we were going through several rounds of comments with the state with regard to this, to the approval of the notice of intent, which prepares this work plan. And they were insistent that, for a couple of reasons. One is the overall area that will be permitted as part of the landfill property has expanded, and they wanted to have a much more extensive soil and rock investigation in those areas, even though the landfill footprint is not going to be on those areas. They would simply be used for borrow soils and other operational reasons. And then also, we struggled a little bit. They, we had, there were a number of areas where we had said we already have a lot of data because of the prior investigation that was done back in the 1990s, and they wanted to have additional data anyway, redundant data over what was there in the past. So, we gave it the college try, but they were very insistent on having a pretty extensive investigation. The other issue I already briefly mentioned was that they had a lot of concern with regard to the coal seams that are in the site. First, that they are concerned that some of them have been, that there might be underground mine works historically there, that would, we would then have to remediate as part of the expansion. And then also, they're concerned, in general, in the geology of the area, media around the landfill, the groundwater tends to flow in the coal seams. Between the rock and the shale, they're tight enough that you don't find much water in there. It's mostly in the coal. And they're concerned that water in those coal seams is actually weeping into the valley where the landfill is, and if that is the case, that we would have to do a big underdrain system. And again, we had pointed out that the data that we have thus far shows that the coal seams are actually tilted away from the site, so that you're not having water draining into the landfill valley. We had pointed out that just observing the site on multiple occasions, we have not observed groundwater weeping out of the coal seams. So, we really did not see it as an issue, but again, they were insistent.
Now, what was the increased cost because of the state insistence, the state's insistence that we add additional bore sites onto the permit?
Yeah. The total cost change for the effort that we're doing for the administrative application, it was significant. It was more than $140,000, $143,900, to be exact.
How much?
And that hit on multiple things. We had a lot more effort in addressing some of the state's comments during the notice of intent to permit than what we'd originally had intended. The field investigation essentially tripled, and then we had to spend additional effort to do the mine investigation and also look at wetland and endangered species reviews as well that we didn't anticipate.
Now, this brings up another issue that I probably need Frankie's input, and maybe Kevin's input on. We did not bid the core drilling out. Is that something, Frankie, that we need to bid out? I'm not sure.
If I may, realizing when we saw it, we actually did get, we put out a request for proposal. The core drilling was being done as a subcontractor to Geo-Cyntech.
That's part of the permit package.
Correct. And we put out three requests for proposals for it. We received two back, so we did receive competitive proposals on it, and we did select the lowest-cost proposal, which was from Geotechnology.
So, you're basically subbing that part of it out as part of the permitting process?
Correct.
Okay. So, this is something we need to do for technical purposes. Is there a motion by a member of the court to authorize the expanded drilling, as Mr. Ramsey has discussed, at an increased cost of $143,900, so that we can move the permit application forward? We have a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Tackett. Tom, when will this start? When will they start the actual drilling?
We have started it this week.
Okay, so it has already started?
Right. No, because we understood the importance of it at this point with regard to our schedule.
Is there any other question or discussion on this portion of the landfill issue? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Go ahead, Tom, sorry.
That is, oh, I did want to just give you an update as well with regard to the operations at the landfill, if that's, if there's some value with that. I did spend a significant amount of time with Larry Hensley discussing landfill operations. Again, the impact of COVID is seen out there, as a number of his staff have had to be taken off of landfill operations and moved over to collections to support that residential, the excess residential waste collection. Right now, the site looks good, given that they're running short-staffed, but as I talked with Larry, there's a fair amount of sort of deferred maintenance that is going on, specifically with regard to getting some grass planted and vegetation growing on the side slopes of the landfill, getting some stormwater channels stabilized, cleaning out some sediment from the sediment pond. The most recent landfill inspection occurred last week and was, got fine marks on it, so that is all good. There's just, as a caution on it, as everybody knows with regard to car maintenance or home maintenance or anything, you can defer maintenance for a while and make it, and make it something last, but eventually, it catches up to you. So, I'm hoping that with all of the changes that have gone on with collection, that things seem to be calming down a little bit, that some of the landfill staff can get back to the landfill here in the next few months, so that some of this deferred maintenance can get taken care of before the winter time arrives.
Now, the next item we have on this same topic is a discussion and authorization to execute a deed with the RH group or its affiliates for mineral and surface at the Pike County landfill in exchange for a lease for property on Ford Mountain and approval to execute a memorandum of agreement. So, essentially, we have had several meetings with representatives of the Ross Harris group. The mineral and surface that the state has questioned, which has been there from the beginning of the whole planet, now that the state has made this an issue, we're going to have to address it. We have paid, we have had the mineral appraised. The mineral, at this point, was found not to be commercially viable because of the price of coal. The problem is, what we discovered is if the price of coal went back to where it was at two years ago, it would have a substantial value. And I think that's the nature of the value of mineral or mineral valuation now with the coal industry being so uncertain. This mineral and surface is held in trust, so, you know, we've talked to them about different proposals, about how to best go about this. And what we have essentially agreed, subject to court approval, is the memorandum of agreement that's been drafted by Mr. Keen and Mr. Downey. The county attorney's office basically says, "The memorandum of agreement entered into between the Pike County Fiscal Court and the RH group, whereas the Pike County Fiscal Court desires to expand the Ford Mountain landfill operated by the Pike County Fiscal Court. The expansion will include property that contains mineral rights owned or managed by the RH group, whereas the parties here to agree that the RH group will deed the mineral and surface rights to the Pike County Fiscal Court. In exchange, Pike County Fiscal Court will grant the RH group a 40-year lease and approximately 25 acres of land on the top of Ford Mountain, situated by the Ford Mountain landfill. The deed for the mineral and surface rights will constitute payment for the lease." This is also the property adjacent to where the RH group is looking to build a solar farm that has the potential to create some jobs and have an economic development impact. So, we're waiting on the RH group, so I think once we have this memorandum of agreement done, that should be sufficient to get the, to make the state happy, and we could give that to them, move forward while we're in the process of preparing the deeds and finalizing that. So, is there a motion? And Kevin, do you have any comments you'd like to add to this? Or Roy, anything you'd like to add to this, either one? You have, you put your mask on.
We took a look at this and took a look at exchanging the mineral for the, for the property above the landfill, and with the nature of the coal business right now, there is just no value to the mineral. So, I think that the lease with the RH group, which will hopefully have an economic impact, as the judge stated, will be a win-win for both parties. And I think this is a move that we do need And I think this is a move that we do need to make to move the landfill expansion along.
Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement that is contained and that I have read here today?
Motion.
With a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second? I'm sorry, Commissioner Robertson, is there a second? With a second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any other question or discussion on this? See, now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The other issue is, Tom, what do we need to do? Once we get the deeds, do we need to get those to the state as well?
Ultimately, no. What the state will ultimately want, I believe that with the agreement that you'll have, that they will allow this issue to not hold up the permitting any further. But ultimately, once the deeds are recorded, they're going to want to see that.
Tom, do you have anything else you'd like to ask, or Miss Smith would like to add, or any questions for us?
No, I've worked this proceeding. It's going well. I don't know if Simone, it's worth an update or anything at this point, but it's, the work is going well. Very appreciative of the help that everyone at the landfill is giving us in order to help us speed through that investigation. And we're hopeful that we will get things done quickly and get this process done in time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge Jones.
Next up is the establishment of a date and/or format for Halloween. I have asked Ms. Tammy Riley of the executive director of the Pike County Health Department to come over to discuss this issue. I've also, yesterday, talked to Dr. Fadi Alacross from Pikeville Medical Center. He is the chief of infectious disease. And Tammy, thanks for coming. And I'm going to turn the floor over to you and let you tell me the health department's position on this subject. Go ahead, you got.
Okay, how about now? Okay, great, great. Thank you for having me, Judge. I do have a couple of documents for reference. And I have reviewed the document that Jeannie shared with me last night. I have notes on mine. So, the question is to discuss the potential for how to proceed, if we proceed, how to proceed with the typical Halloween activities. And I'm not here to tell anyone this is not a typical year. I think everyone watching and hearing in person is aware of that. So, likewise, I think hopefully everyone would be in agreement that Halloween and trick-or-treating, in all likelihood, would not need to proceed as usual. These aren't usual times. And I can start with the document that Jeannie shared, if you want. It had three options. The first option being a door-to-door option. And then the second option moved into a trunk-or-treat option. And the third option moved into a drive-through option. And I can tell you that those options go in order of least to most favorite. Those options, based on CDC guidelines and recommendations, go from high risk to the lowest risk that you possibly could celebrate the Halloween activities. So, when you talk about door-to-door, there are some guidelines here that would keep individuals safer. For example, the suggestion is to not participate at all if you are sick, or if you've been around others who are sick. Stay six feet apart. You know, only go with friends, or there's a couple of suggestions about who to be with, you know, how to social distance, what for candy givers to do, wear a mask. Parents should consider buying their own children their own candy, to keep candy in individual baggies. Also, it says candy givers stay behind the storm door while handing out candy. If you're a high-risk individual, sit outside. I would recommend that high-risk individuals not participate at all. But the door-to-door, traditional Halloween trick-or-treating is not advisable at this time. And I'm going to give a very brief update on numbers at the end and what the CDC recommendations are. Suggestion number two, which is a trunk-or-treat option, could be done safely if it's modified to be done more like a drive-through trunk-or-treat. In other words, if the children and their families arrive in one vehicle and you have a large enough space where they are trunk-or-treating.
What is trunk-or-treat?
Trunk-or-treat, you see that a lot in church parking lots and community organizations do it, like maybe Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, where a lot of times it's in church parking lots. And you open the trunk and everyone has, there's a theme around their car and in their trunk. And you do a game. I participated in trunk-or-treats many times. And, you know, you'll bring like a cornhole game. And each family will have a little fun activity and a different treat in their trunk of their car. It's like tailgating for Halloween for kids. You open up your trunk and you decorate it, and the kids go around and play a game and get a treat out of the trunk. What I'm saying is, you can do that to some degree if it's a drive-through trunk-or-treat. So, and that is very similar to what the city of Pikeville has planned for their Nightmare on Main. Like, if you look at the third option, it's a drive-through option. And you could do trunk-or-treat or just do strictly a drive-through, where you have individuals, companies, business leaders. The YMCA is working in conjunction with the city of Pikeville to do the drive-through at the Bob Amis Field, at the main landing, at the top, I believe. And individuals, the health department's going to participate in that. So, we will have one vehicle there and two employees who will wear masks. We will give out pre-wrapped, you know, sealed candy. The kids do not get out of the car. They will circle around to each vendor, and the vendor will just drop the candy in their bag through the window. That's it. It's a very quick, you would not be contaminating anyone if someone showed up positive the next day. There would be no sustained interaction. And when you talk about doing a traditional trunk-or-treat, I want to call to everyone's attention that in Pike County, and I've said this before, we have the great luxury of not being densely populated. We live in a safe community. We live in a beautiful community. And we're not densely populated. But most of you have probably seen, you know, I think of some of the neighborhoods in downtown Pikeville, for example, on Halloween night. And what happens is, in a matter of a few minutes, a quiet neighborhood street turns into a densely populated area. And what you're going to do is create a situation where you're going to have a densely populated area on Scott Avenue, on Cedar Creek, in Bowls Edition, on Raccoon Creek and King Village. You know, I'm thinking Forest Hills and at Belfry. I'm thinking of all these communities where you're creating, you know, densely populated children out, running around. Also, you need to take into consideration that if we do traditional trick-or-treating, and that's not modified, if someone does show up positive at a household, the contact tracing for public health would be a nightmare, and the blanket statements would be numerous in all likelihood. And the CDC has come out with some recommendations. And the CDC recommends that no community participate in the traditional Halloween activities. And they've also layered it into three levels, low-risk activities. You can do, you know, neighborhoods that traditionally see high-volume trick-or-treaters, they can still come out in their yards and decorate their yards and wave and dress in costume and let the children drive through, roll down the windows, wave with their costume. You can do neighborhood contests. You can do carving pumpkin contests in your yards for people to drive by and look, similar to we did the bear that was so popular earlier in the year. You can have Halloween movie night. Moderate activities are, where you're a little bit higher risk, they are outdoors, so that does decrease. But it would be things like trunk-or-treat, where the kids do get out of the car. You're increasing risk. Have an outdoor family movie night where people aren't socially distancing. You're still outdoors. That's also medium risk. And then your high risk is doing actual door-to-door trick-or-treating, doing, having rural, in a rural area, fall festivals where individuals are traveling from community to community. And also tractor rides and hay rides. Those are all considered high-risk activities by the CDC. I don't know, do you have any questions about that so far?
Well, I mean, here's, I know from my conversation with Dr. Fadi, that, and I think the people of the county, you know, I want to say two things. One, there's people that still don't believe this is real. I still have people say, well, you know, it'll be over after the election. I mean, that ignores the fact that Israel just shut their economy completely down for the second time, that this disease is still killing people around the world. And that the Herald Leader had an article yesterday from the CEO of King's Daughter's Medical Center in Ashland, an hour and 40 minutes down the road, that they have reached maximum capacity in their COVID unit. They can't take any more COVID patients. And Dr. Fadi I talked to yesterday said that they have a substantial number here. And I'm concerned, you know, what we are seeing is a lot of the younger people that are getting it are recovering fully. But some of the older people, I mean, we know that over 200,000 people have died from this disease. And of course, I'm going to let, this is a decision I think the court has to make together. I think that traditional trick-or-treating is off the table. I am concerned when you see the other options, and it says allow candy to sit five to seven days before consuming, or wash the outside wrapper with soap and water. Now, being the parent of three kids, it is going to be impossible to keep children from tearing into it immediately.
Right.
And the point you're making about contact tracing, that if someone who has participated is diagnosed, and then the question is, how many trick-or-treaters did you have at your home?
Right.
That is a recipe for an impossible situation for the health department to even try to do contact tracing. Now, I want to read the recommendations or the rules for the city's Nightmare on Main. Store-bought candy only. All volunteers should be masked and gloves when handling candy. Basically, they expected 3,500 participants this year. No activities or made-on-the-site treats. They're going to be assigning spots as groups register. So, I mean, the issue is, I mean, the issue is, some people in Pike County, I know participating in Nightmare on Main, there's kids from all over Air County, Floyd County. We've had people from Grundy. We've had people from Norton. All over the region have come to Nightmare on Main. The question is, for some areas in Pike County, if you go to Phelps, or if you're at Belfry or BlackBerry, it's not really practical to get off work and drive your kids to Pikeville to go through this. I'm not going to be the one to make this decision in a vacuum, because I think it, public health needs to be, I mean, what is your recommendation as to what we do?
Our recommendation would be to do modified activities. Anything that's drive-through, where the children are not going from either car to car or house to house, even yard to yard, because of potential, it's just nearly impossible to assure that they will social distance. And just the risk that someone giving out candy could be unbeknownst to themselves a positive. I mean, our recommendation is to stay on that low-risk area, end of the spectrum from what CDC recommends, which is drive-through. Keep the kids in the car. Do, you can do yard, neighborhood decoration contests. What I would recommend personally is to, for each community, see if a church or a school parking lot would step up and allow, you know, vendors from that area to register and do what Nightmare, similar to what Nightmare on Main is. Like, have an entrance and an exit for the car, and then just wrap the vendors around in their vehicles, and then they could give out pre-wrapped, store-bought candy. And then, and as long as the families, you can either, if it's sealed candy, like say a Dum Dum, you can't take an alcohol, wipe and wipe it. If you're just going to let it set and give time for the virus to do what it's going to do, you have, you need to really give it three to five days. That's our recommendation. But you can wipe most candy off. It's pre-wrapped, store-bought candy, you should be able to wipe it off. Sealed candy bars, mostly those wrappers are plastic, and you can wipe them with soap and water and rinse. But I would recommend to find schools and parking lots, churches, that would allow that. If each community had one large parking lot where they could do like a drive-through, that's what I would ultimately find, that's my recommendation, that that is the safest option.
The problem that I see with that option is the county is so big, it is going to require a significant number of locations throughout the county to do that. The fiscal court doesn't have the manpower or resources to coordinate a safe Halloween event in, you know, numerous, if you did one in each commission district, or two in each commission district. What's your thoughts on that?
Judge, I know, I know in the past, I think Dorton and Millard has had like safe nights. But I mean, that was before this COVID. Lisa Hurley at Dorton, works with my wife, and they kind of are talking about doing a trunk-or-treat, just drive-through at Dorton. I don't, I've not spoken about Millard yet, but, you know, I don't know.
Judge, I'd like to point out, we've had 20 cases in two days. And I know you and I've talked, but I did an update on our daily incident rate. The daily incident rate is a rolling seven-day average, and you normalize the data to 100,000 population. So, whatever number I get on average, I multiply it times 1.7, because our population to 100 K is about, there's about a 1.7 ratio. And our number went from 5.4 to 5.9 to eight. So, today, we're at eight. And I'm sure you're all aware that when you go above eight, when you get, I mean, above 10, that 10 to 25 puts your schools and most of your activities in a different zone.
Well, I mean, you know, I think all of us are concerned that, you know, my kids are back in school, in the Pikeville school system. We've, you know, Jason's got kids in the county schools. I guess Brian's still got one in the county schools. We are concerned about the risk to kids and these, you know, the increase in number of cases. U-Pike is on a three-day stand down, is my understanding. And when you've had 20 cases in two days, is that the largest two-day case total we've had since the start?
It's close. The week of July 26, we had 51 cases that week. And I believe we had 12 in one day and eight the second day. So, we've matched that once before.
So, I know some of the schools, maybe this is something that we need to talk to the Board of Education about, because if we could identify a few places. But then the question becomes, you know, how do we fund that? How do we go about doing it? It would seem to me if we could work something out with the Board of Education, that might be the best solution, if we could, you know, if we could have schools where kids could do that.
Judge, mostly all the vendors bring their own candy, or they give the school some money, and then the school will go buy the candy and give out, like under Ray Jones' law officer.
We've done that quite, yeah, we've done that quite. That is a frequent occurrence, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we would have to come up with some stuff ourselves, but it'd probably be a good time to contact the Pike County schools.
Right.
But what we want, I mean, we would have to be some kind of drive-through event or something.
It really, to be at the lowest-risk level, this comes fresh from CDC and, you know, public health experts, is that drive-through is the safest. When you get them out of the car and they start moving around, even a trunk-or-treat, that's medium, that's in your moderate area. And the door-to-doors is just high risk.
Yeah. I could talk to Reed up there at the board and let him conduct it at the schools, you know, like the city of Pikeville, they could do it at the elementary school and the high school.
So, here's what I, here's what, let's do, let's contact Mr. Atkins at the Board of Education, get his input on this. And then we'll make a decision at the Board of Education, get his input on this, and then we'll make a decision at the first fiscal court meeting in October 6, and.
Well, I, I like that decision, thank you, thank you, Judge. That will give us some additional time as well. The independent school will return Monday, as we all know, and the county Board of Education District returns on Monday, so that will give us some time to see where our cases are as well with that.
And it, yeah, we'll have a couple of weeks to, to know, and I'll just say this so the public understands, I had a friend of mine, his wife sent me a message, because people she works with are wanting to know, you know, do they need to buy Halloween costumes? The decision that, you know, whether I make it, we make it collectively, or I make it as, you know, as an executive order, or how we decide to go about it, it's gonna be following the CDC guidelines, and we're gonna err on the side of safety, because, you know, we have, this community has avoided what's happened in other communities to this point, but it's not over yet, and because we've not had a large number of fatalities, and we've not had, but we are seeing, as you said, 20 cases in two days, we want to make sure that we don't get to where, the worst-case scenario to me, Tammy, would be for Pikeville Medical Center to have happen what has happened at King's Daughters, when they can't take any more COVID patients.
Right, the whole purpose of our mitigation strategy is why we're all wearing masks today and staying six feet away, is to slow the spread, to keep from overburdening healthcare, that's the bottom line.
So, we'll have you back at the meeting on October 6, and then we'll make a decision collectively. At the, in the meantime, I'm gonna reach back out to Dr. Foddy, see what his thoughts are. It would make more sense to me if we did something drive-through, where kids could come through in their costumes, roll the wind down, hold their bag out, they wanted to, you know, and then the school personnel with masks and gloves could distribute the candy, volunteers, so that way we're taking steps to make sure that everyone's protected.
Right, thank, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
I appreciate you.
Mr. Lewis, would you please come up, sir? Next up, we're gonna have Mr. Ansel Lewis, who's the CEO for Big Sandy Healthcare, and Ansel, you couldn't make the last meeting that Mr. Harold was present at when we announced that Big Sandy Healthcare would be opening a comprehensive medical clinic in Phelps. Would you just please introduce yourself and tell the folks who are watching this what your plans are for the folks over in Peter Creek?
Thank you, Judge. Executive Jones, I'm Ansel Lewis, I'm the CEO of Big Sandy Healthcare. Big Sandy Healthcare is a nonprofit corporation, it's been around since the mid-1970s, and we operate medical clinics in the region.
Yeah, I think probably the most famous of those is the Mud Creek Clinic.
The most famous certainly is the Mud Creek Clinic. It was one of the original clinics, Mud Creek Clinic and Hope Family Medical Center in Sayersville were the two original clinics, and of course, the Mud Creek Clinic was founded by Yula Hall and her compatriots at the time, and I'm happy to say that Yula's still working at the clinic. At Big Sandy Healthcare, we provide a broad scope of healthcare services. All of our clinics have medical, we have physicians, nurse practitioners, registered nurses in all of our clinics. We also have a pharmacy in each clinic, we have x-ray, we have ultrasound, but in addition, we have dental in three clinics, plus we have a mobile dental unit that we take to a number of schools in the area. We also have optometry in three locations, we have podiatry in two locations, and we have behavioral health therapists that work in each of our clinics, and they also provide some services in the schools. So we provide a broad scope of, of services, both in our clinics and also in a number of schools in the area. We have the same plans for the, the intergenerational building in Freeburn. We, we hope to provide a broad scope of primary care services. We certainly understand, after talking with a number of people, that there's a need in that area, there's an unmet need, and we're certainly happy to partner with Pike County Fiscal Court on this matter.
Ansel, you know, my dad, who's here, lived in the Phelps community for close to 20 years, and Greg Fannin, who's sitting behind you, lives in, in Phelps. I've got a lot of great friends there, does every member of this court, and there's a tremendous need for primary care services.
Yes.
There's no optometrist in Phelps, there's no dentist in Phelps, and, in the Phelps area, I should say.
Right.
And that is a large area that is underserved, and that's been the mission for Big Sandy Healthcare. A lot of folks also need to understand that you operate the Shelby Valley Clinic.
We operate the Shelby Valley Clinic, I think that clinic was started in 1994. I came on board in 1998, and we subsequently added, we built a new clinic building, I think that was completed in 2004, and by the way, Shelby Valley Clinic is situated on county-owned property, so it's been a partnership. But we've, we've built two additions to that clinic since, that one addition for dental and a second dental, a second addition enabled us to expand medical and also to add optometry.
And that's the plan long-term for the court, is to see that those kinds of services are expanded into the Phelps area as well, and we want to thank you for what you've done for the people of Pike County, because I, I called a friend of mine, we were talking about this clinic, and he lives over on Hurricane Creek at, at Majestic Stopover, and he drives to Shelby Valley Clinic to see one of your providers.
Right.
And I said, well, maybe in late winter, early spring, you won't have to drive an hour drive to Shelby Valley Clinic, and I think it's important that, that the people of Peter Creek have access to healthcare, and one of the things I would personally like to see at some point is like an urgent care clinic, or after-air's clinic, because a lot of people that do get off work, they get home, and it's a long way to drive to Tug Valley or back to Pikeville for medical care. So, we appreciate your willingness to provide this service. When I called you, you know, what you've expressed is what I had in mind, a comprehensive medical clinic. I know all three of the commissioners, Commissioner Robertson went over with us that day.
Right.
And, you know, we all represent all of Pike County.
Sure.
And that one area that's the most underst, underserved in terms of medical care is the Phelps-Freeburn-Majestic community. So, we have a lease prepared, and has Mr. Harold, James, have you had opportunity to look at it?
Yes, Judge.
All right, so your attorney says the lease is all good, and Mr. Keane, is, are you okay with the lease as well?
Please.
Mr. Downey?
Maybe between the three of us, it is.
Okay, and, all right, and we hope that this is very successful, and this is for a period of 10 years, it will be for $1 per year, we hope you can cover that.
I had to get a loan, but I've, I've got the, I've got the.
I may loan it to you, how's that? Is there a motion to authorize or approve the lease agreement with Big Sandy Healthcare for the Phelps Intergenerational Center Building?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any other question or discussion, or members of the court would like to address this?
Judge, this is great for the Phelps community, I mean, they really need it, I think it'd be outstanding for them. The next thing I'd just like to see the Phelps community get is an ambulance service. They really need ambulance service in the Phelps community.
That is something that was next on my list to talk about. Ansel, we, we've got an issue. My dad, who's sitting back here, had a heart attack in August of 2013. I actually happened to be in Phelps that day, and I was sat down with Judge Rutherford to have lunch at Hornets Restaurant, we were getting ready to go to the dedication for the new elementary school that we funded when I was in the Senate, and I got a phone call from my secretary that my dad was sick, and I popped in the car, actually grabbed a bottle of aspirin from Mr. Tackett's aunt, hopped in the car and met the ambulance on, between Hornets Diner, where my dad's business was at at Phelps, and probably the only reason he's here today is a guy named Sid Lester, who's on the fire department and longtime EMT, and EMS worker. I told Sid, after I followed him all the way to the hospital, that he should have been a, a race car driver, because I didn't realize that you could take some of those curves at 85 miles an hour and afford a coddle line van, but he did, and he got dad there, and it's, but it's a problem now, because there's no ambulance service there, and maybe we're gonna try to set a meeting up, and maybe we can get you to come, if we could find a way to maybe base an ambulance at that location, if we had to even help provide a building for them to operate in. This is a really sore subject, and I know Mr. Tackett's here, Doug, you want to come up and address this real quick before we, before we take this vote? And, you know, Doug has been in, was in the ambulance business for a long time himself. Judge Hickman was a, was a, in EMS, he was an EMT, was one of the first EMTs in this area. He has a lot of experience, and this is something he's been working on. Doug, what's, what's the issue that we don't have an ambulance based in Phelps?
Well, they do have a building leased over there for the next two years, keeping a vehicle over there is a hard matter, they're short on people is one of the big things, there's a shortage of EMS people across the state. Lifeguard is providing classes free to people that want to be EMTs, and then later paramedics, with a sign-on bonus to, to work for them once they're, they complete their classes. They've graduated two classes, and they've upped their number of people they have, but they still don't have enough to fully stock another location, and they say too, that it boils down to money, a lot of it, unfortunately.
There's been an issue about whether we can afford, whether they can afford to keep an ambulance?
Yeah, they basically put it as being either feast or famine, you could be over there all week and make one or two trips, or you could be there and make several trips, but there's not, they say there's not enough to effectively maintain one there for the funds.
Well, we're gonna have to do this, because it's not, when it's a matter of life or death, and they have to send an ambulance from Island Creek,
Right.
You're talking, you know, if you've got to go to Stopover, you gotta go to Freeburn, it's an hour each way.
Yes, it is.
And that's just not acceptable.
We've had meetings and talked with them on this, and they've been making a better effort to keep one over there, usually through the night and early mornings, but when their call volumes go up and they need them, they've got to pull them out, they say.
Now, I know Judge Hickman, if he can tune in here, we had worked with Lifeguard to provide, even make facilities available, are they still using the training room for, for their classes?
Not with us, I think they were using some rooms at the college.
Okay.
University, rather.
So.
How many total ambulances do they have on them?
I think they have 12, they're licensed for 12, I do believe, but they can only staff about six or seven.
I, I noticed that once you get out of this little hub of, you know, out in the rural part of Pike County,
Mm-hmm.
It's Phelps, Phelps, Feds Creek, just right on
Right.
Down that we have this problem, and I've had quite a few calls in the last little bit.
Well, they, they've got a location in Elkhorn City also, but I don't know how often they keep that staffed either, and I think it's about like the one at Phelps.
Something to tell me in Phelps is fire.
Yeah, well, I know sometimes they, I listen to the radio traffic every day, so I know they stay pretty busy, and sometimes there's, there's a wait for an ambulance, sometimes if they can't get somebody else to cover it, like Capitol Action First Response, if they can handle one, they will.
You know, Judge Hickman, years and years ago, he was working at EMS, tried to get the county, when they were setting up the volunteer fire departments,
Right.
To set up a county ambulance service, and, you know, when we had all the coal service tax money, that, to me, would have been a better use of resources than building parks and playgrounds, but we've got parks and playgrounds everywhere.
I know.
Is there anything we need to do with KBEAM's Kentucky Board of Emergency Medical Services that we might be able to address if, if Lifeguard doesn't do something about this?
Possibly, we could talk with Chuck O'Neill, he's one of the directors at KBEAM's, him or Michael Pointer, either one, we could talk to either one of those people.
Would you please reach out to them, and let's see what our options are, because we really, I understand the staffing issues, and there's some reasons that the staffing issues, there's just no classes for EMTs and paramedics.
Right.
And we're gonna have to address that, that's, that's a matter of life or death, and we, it's something that I need you to, to get with me, let me know something the next court meeting, if you could do that, because, you know, there's a lot of people in that area particularly, because, you know, that, it's the longest distance from that community, same reason we're putting a medical clinic, and it's the longest distance to either one of the two hospitals in Pike County.
Right.
Thank you, sir. All right, so we have before us a motion to authorize or approve a lease agreement with Big Sandy Healthcare for the Phelps Intergenerational Center Building. We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson, a second by Commissioner Booth, is there any other question or comment on this? See, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, and I'm gonna go ahead and execute the lease, and Ansel, if you'd like to come up, and we'll go ahead and let you execute it, and that way we get this ball rolling. Ansel, when, when do you anticipate that we'll be in a position to, when do you anticipate that you'll start construction on the building?
I believe we can start this winter, we'll have to end the building, do, get some measurements, up with a design, but we'll start soon.
Okay, and then anticipate a spring opening, probably? I'd like to see if we could get Governor Beshear to come up, and maybe Congressman Rogers, I think it's, I think it's a big, it's, this is a big deal for the people in Phelps, Freeburn, Majestic, you know, all of Knox Creek, I think it's, it will be a very, very positive thing for all of Pike County, we appreciate your investment, I think, you know, job creation, job opportunities, addressing major problems with healthcare delivery, and we look forward to seeing this be successful.
Well, Judge Executive Jones, and the court, I tell you, this, I think, is a big occasion, because I think sincerely a great need, Phelps and Freeburn area. I, I do appreciate you contacting me, alerting me to the availability of that building.
And, and we'll get with Paul Williamson with, over there, to get the stuff out that we need to get out of it, and, so, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, the next item is a second reading of a proposed road ordinance adopting Hardy Lane into the Pike County road system. Mr. Keane, would you please proceed, sir?
This is a second reading, the ordinance would incorporate in District 3 Hardy Lane, a length of 173 feet, being 15 feet in width, this is a second reading, so a motion, a vote are in order.
All right, is there a motion to adopt Hardy Lane into the Pike County road system?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Robertson, is there any other question or discussion? See, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Yes. Next item is a second reading of a proposed road ordinance adopting Ellis Lane into the Pike County road system.
This is Ellis Lane from District One for one-tenth of a mile. It's an extension.
Is there a motion to adopt Ellis Lane into the Pike County road system?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth, any other question or discussion? See none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is a second reading of a proposed road ordinance extending Maynard Fork CR-1042. Mr. King?
That's correct. This is County Road 1042, also known as Maynard Fork Road for a one-tenth of a mile extension.
Is there a motion to adopt this extension of ordinance extending Maynard Fork?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett, any other question or discussion? See none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is a second reading of a proposed road ordinance adopting Zebulon Heights into the Pike County road system.
Zebulon Heights is in District One and this would be for three tenths of a mile at 15 feet in width.
Is there a motion to adopt Zebulon Heights into the Pike County road system?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth, any other question or discussion? See none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Mr. King, next item is the first reading of a proposed road ordinance adopting Loftus Hollow Road into the Pike County road system.
Mr. Little, is this a new, a new intake or is this an extension as well?
This is a new intake.
It is new, but Mr. Tackett, Doug, had informed me that we do need to drop the, the road.
Is that correct?
We need to drop the road off from Loftus and it just be Loftus Hollow.
So it would be Loftus Hollow only?
Yes.
Uh, in looking at what we have here, we do have the, um, have the petition signed by one, two, three, four, five, six, appears to be seven families in the community. Have you looked at this road?
We have. Myself and Commissioner Booth have, we went and looked at this.
And it is appropriate for incorporation in the county road system?
It is.
Okay. Uh, this is a first reading, so no motion voter in order at this time. This is located in District Three. Road name would be amended to read Loftus Hollow for a length of 1,600 feet at 15 feet in width and we can take this up at the next regular court meeting.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a second reading and adoption of a proposed budget amendment number one for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Frankie, can you explain this to us, please?
Uh, Judge, this is basically to amend our prior year surplus carryover into the budget and then coal severance projects, there's four coal severance projects and then there's the CARES Act money to amend into the budget.
All right. We're amending the CARES Act money even though we've not drawn, we can't necessarily draw down all the money.
When we did the budget last year, uh, the contract for the CARES Act money wasn't signed, so it wasn't in our budget for this fiscal year.
But we're going to include the full amount just because, even though we probably can't draw all of that down.
Yeah, there's an offset to the expense on that for the like amount, so it'll be whatever the revenue and the expense should offset each other, no matter how much it is, but the contract is for 1.9.
And how many to this date, to this point, how many checks have we issued to Pike County businesses under the grant program that the court created under the CARES Act?
To this point, I think there's 17 people out of 76 businesses that haven't picked their checks up yet.
So almost, so 59?
Right. So far.
We hope that this grant program will give some aid to those businesses that have been hit so hard by the, by the shutdown and the slowdown due to the pandemic. All right. Is, Mr. King, can you go ahead and present the reading, sir?
Yes, this is a second reading of an ordinance relating to the annual budget and amendment thereof to reflect total amended revenues and expenditures of $14,340,027.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed budget amendment number one for fiscal year 2020, 2021?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett, any other question or discussion? See none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the authorization to execute the master service agreement for planning, engineering, fiscal impact analysis and related services and authorization to proceed with the Thrasher Group Incorporated and approval of the County Judge Executive to execute all related documents. This is the master service agreement for the Pike County Trail System and before we act on this, I'd just like to let the members of the court address this and we'll start with Commissioner Tackett, who chairs the Trail Committee. Um, we've started working on this trail thing and we've got really so far on it now that we have to have help in the engineering part of it to help us go forward with this. So we chose Thrasher, uh, they've got a office in Lexington and we've already worked with them and agreed to a price on this and we need to go ahead and do this so we can go ahead and go forward with it. Two, two, Commissioner Robertson, Mr. King has pointed out two issues. It's always good when, when you don't have to worry about the legal stuff and you can defer to somebody smarter than you. So Kevin has pointed out two issues with this contract. One is it does have an arbitration clause and Mr. King, Mr. Downey, myself are pretty much adverse to those because arbitration in, in many cases is more, if there's a dispute with Thrasher, will be a more costly alternative to resolving a dispute than actually civil litigation would be. The other issue is it has a confidentiality provision in it and as a public agency, it says, except it's necessary to obtain the required insurance or bonding, neither client or engineer shall disclose the terms and conditions of this agreement or any work order to any third party other than its subcontractors without prior written consent of both. I'm not sure that a government, agency can enter into a confidentiality agreement like that because the entire agreement will be subject to open records. So that's, that's why we've got you and Kevin and Roy. Kevin. To take care of this. So what I would ask is that we pass over this to October 6th and let Kevin or Roy, can you reach out to them and just say that those two provisions need to come out? If they want the business, they'll, they'll be hap, happy to take them out, I'm sure.
I think, I think in the previous, what they've done, it's not been with counties. It's been like private or.
And that, and that's what I would think too. Yeah. But I would think that if they want to do the business.
Yes.
And what I think we could do is, uh, we could entertain a motion to approve the contract subject to the removal of Article 17 on confidentiality and.
Seven.
Article seven that deals with arbitration. Seven, 17.
Seven, seven.
Yeah. Um, dispute resolution. Um, we could approve it subject to them taking out Article seven and Article 17.
That's probably the issue, probably been in there. That, that has probably been in every one of the cases on this, but they've never had to really work with, uh, with the county. It's been either private or I think.
It's probably boilerplate language, but.
Yeah.
We still want it out.
Yeah, we, well, we, like you said, it's all open record request. We don't have nothing to hide here.
So is there a motion to approve the master service agreement with Thrasher Architecture, Engineering and Field Services, subject to their agreement to remove Article seven and Article 17, dealing prospectively with mediation and arbitration and then confidentiality? Uh. Motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Sharon, did you have anything you'd like to add on this?
I think it is just a standard, the master agreement, that's just a standard agreement that they include what, um, the task order number one is, that tells you the price and the scope and what we're going to be doing, what Thrasher will be doing for our group, for the Trail Authority. But as far as the master agreement, I think that's just a boilerplate template that they use with other authorities, other trail and private people. So if we need to take that out, I don't think it'll be a problem.
Are you okay with this, Kevin?
I did ask David Halfley.
And we did point a, a committee out of the committee to go over all this.
Yes.
Each, each person, this was the lowest priced.
Oh, yeah. When we did the RFP, the review committee, that was their recommendation.
And it was the lowest priced one.
Yeah, based on experience and price and couple, whatever the criteria was that we advertised for the RFP. But I think the master services agreement, that's just something they have signed with anybody. And I asked David why we had task order number one and then a master services agreement and he said that that does not bind us if we sign that agreement to any other project or any other money other than task order number one. Cause I was concerned too, that we would be tied, you know, that, that would bind us for any other work. And he said, no, that only covers task order number one.
Well.
I didn't want us to sign an agreement that would tie us to them indefinitely.
Yeah. So if we can agree to them to get these removed and we need to, we're rolling on this and we want to keep rolling.
And, and I do want to, I do want to say something else since we're talking about this, the Thrasher and the Trail System a little bit. Anytime, anybody's got any questions, I mean, just contact us, we can give you the right answers, not, not what you hear there, hear, hear, whatever, we'll give you the, we'll give you the straight up truth about it. There, there's nothing to hide on this. It's going, it can help all Pike Countyans. Uh, like I said, anytime you need to get, you don't understand it or somebody says this and you don't agree with it, just call and I, I'll tell you the, tell you the truth about it.
Or they can call Sherri Skaggs and.
Yeah, if they've got any questions.
Call her number, it's 432 what, Sherri?
08, 63 awake.
Another problem with Kevin. If they can call her if, if they want to know anything and, uh, you know, she can get, get the information and we'll call her back, I mean, we'll call the people back and let them know, we'll try to help them and inform them any way they want to be informed, you know, to know about the Trail System. This agreement has two indemnification provisions in it. The first indemnification provision says that the engineer agrees to protect, defend, indemnify and hold client harmless from any and all damage, et cetera. Including without limit, without regard to the cause or causes thereof, including but not limited to strict liability. For the sole, but not limited to the sole or concurrent negligence of the client. And then if you read 12.2, it's got a, I don't really understand what they're saying, Kevin.
There's some conflict between the two provisions that need to be, I understand what they were trying to do, but I don't think it reads the way they intended it.
There's a typo in it. Whoever drafted this, hopefully they didn't pay a whole lot for it. But basically it says that engineer will indemnify us for our own negligence and that we indemnify the engineering company for their negligence, which makes absolutely no sense. So. We, we just need to call them and talk to them and. What I would recommend is we pass over this to October 6th and let us work these three issues out. Okay. Uh, because I mean, there is a, I mean, it's a, it's a, hopefully something that wouldn't happen, but you know, once this is put in writing and has the force of a contract, uh, it, we need to make sure it's, there's no other issues in it, but that, that is a provision that's not, uh, I think it's, it's, it's a drafting error on their part, but it needs to be fixed. So let's pass over, if you're all okay with that and just put it on Jeannie at the next meeting. Okay. Roy, would you take a look at that for me? If you look at the conflict between the sections 12.1, 12.2? You, you see I'm talking about Kevin? All right. So we're going to pass over that one. The next item is discussion of dilapidated house near a county road and possible action. I'm going to let Commissioner Booth address this because it is a big issue. Brian, go ahead, sir.
Judge, what this is, there's a house on, uh, it's over, connects over Murphy Bottom. It's not actually Murphy Bottom, it's on Arnoke Road, connects in Murphy Bottom. Uh, the house, there's pictures here that you can look at, it's virtually fell in. There's one section of it that's leaning toward the county roads, it's kind of propped up with this porch deal, looks like. Uh, the people in there was very concerned that this is going to fall over into the road and perhaps block them in and all. I talked to Fabian a little bit about it. You can easily see it, we could probably set up in the county road and just push this back over into the rotten part of the house, just to keep it from maybe blocking these people in or having to have employees come out on a weekend or pay overtime to get them to come out to push this out of the road. Uh, that's virtually, that's all they asked for us to do is just push this back over into the property to where it does block the county road. I spoke to Mr. King also about this.
Were we ever able to determine who owns the property?
No, I never did was able to determine who owned the property, no.
Did we check with the PVA's office to see?
I think so.
The, the problem with this right here, we, we've got this all over this county. I mean, I mean, we, we've got the, a problem in our, in our streets up at Garden Village. I mean, it's the rate of file into the road. I mean, there's.
From Robson Creek to across this county.
Well, here, here's what I would say that we need to look at and this is something that we can get Roy to do. Roy, we've got a blighted housing ordinance, come up here, if you don't care, just come up to the, Kevin's got the ordinance that we need to look at because, well, why don't you, why don't you go ahead and you two can discuss it and we can figure out what we need to do. I'll let Kevin take the lead on it. Roy, you can just have a seat up here because.
We have an ordinance in place that, um, that it's another good thing that Judge Rutherford did during his time in here. We have ordinance number 06.19.07.012 that deals with nuisance properties in the county. Section one subsection A, I think is on point on this situation and it discusses dangerous and dilapidated buildings. And it notes that any abandoned building, house or structure so out of repair and dilapidated that it will, if the condition is allowed to continue, endanger the life limb or property over, cause damage, harm or injury to persons using the roads or public ways of the county by reason of collapse of the building. It goes on, but then in a nutshell is, is the situation that we're looking at here. Uh, the procedure to try to deal with that is set forth in section three of the ordinance, the abatement procedure. And subsection B states that there needs to be a finding with the solid waste department that the building is a nuisance. Um, and if that is done, the notice shall be given to the property owner, given them 30 days to abate. We can have the solid waste officer. We can have the solid waste officer serve the notice or we could send the notice by certified mail, if we can determine who that is. If we're unable to determine or, or otherwise get these people served, we can do a notice and the, the solid waste officer will have to do an affidavit saying that forth. And we can do a publication in the newspaper for two weeks, which will satisfy the notice requirement. After notice is given, we've got thirty days to wait and allow the property owner to abate the nuisance. And if they don't do that, then we have the option as a county to go and do it ourselves. Once that is done, we would be able to place a lien on the property. Now granted, it's a one in a million chance that we ever get any money back on those procedures, but we do have the option to do that and put a lien on the property to get our expended funds back if that's the case.
But also, also if the property's ever sold, we would collect our money that way, right?
That's correct.
Is, is there a way to sue them civilly to get the money back?
The process in the all costs, this is subsection E of section three. All costs incurred by the county for nuisance abatement shall constitute a lien on the premises. If a bill for the same remains unpaid sixty days after service upon, service upon the property owner, the county may file a statement affidavit of lien claim with the county clerk. The lien shall be answered at a rate of eight percent per annum until thereafter paid. Notice that the lien shall be made to the owner of the property. See, I. He also may bring civil action against the owner to recover the same. There's subsection F.
I mean, it would seem to me the most logical place to start would be go up to the PVA's office, Roy, and see if we can identify, you may have to go up there with Commissioner Booth and let him be able to point to you on the map exactly where this is at. We can identify who the property owner is, the first thing we ought to do is contact them. The problem is, as Ronnie said, there's so many of these properties across the county. If we get in the business of tearing them down ourselves and then trying to have to file suit to get the money back, I mean, you're just going to be throwing, it's going to be a massive expenditure of money. Because when you start tearing these down, you don't know what you're going to get into.
And, but, but. They're really the people that lives here, they're not asking us to clean the road, but they're just concerned as it falls out in the road. They just wanted to push back to where it doesn't fall in the road.
Where exactly is this house, Brian?
It's the Arnoke Hollow, it's taken in with Murphy Bottom, not around there. Ten behind us, speaking.
Well, I think we all sat up here and we realized that people comes in here and looks at this stuff, you know, they don't want to be around this place. And I mean, it's everywhere in this county. And I'm, I'm not trying to judge anybody why they've not cleaned it up or made the mess, but I'm talking about some of these houses that I know that's been here for years, that they have no intention of cleaning it. It, it lowers the property rate on people around them and all this.
Property values?
Yes, I mean, it's just, something's going to have to be done some way or another.
You might can answer this for Jimmy. At one time, I think Wayne T., didn't they have some kind of program through Pride, cleaning some of this stuff up like it, like these houses? Okay.
Only thing is they had probably eight or nine million dollars more in coal service taxes.
That's, that's true too, Judge. But you know, a lot of these places that's abandoned, it's not burnt, the meth heads has went in there and cooked meth and burnt, you know, ended up burning it down.
Fabian, Fabian's.
Fabian might have answered.
The only thing that I was going to add, Judge, is, I mean, aside from the legal side of it, it would save me if I was allowed to go up and just push that thing over. It wouldn't take ten minutes worth of work now as opposed to calling someone out on a weekend when it does fall out into the road. I mean, it would be simple for me just to have it pushed over.
Go over, take an excavator up there and knock it over, push it back out of the road.
Exactly, that's always nice.
If we find out who owns this, what we are going to start doing is we're going to pick some of these people out there letting these eyes sores lack, you know.
Right.
And then we'll start filing liens on them. We'll pick one or two out if we can find a way to, Sharon, are there any grants that we might be able to use to clean up this kind of stuff? Because I mean. Wait, is it, I mean, you, have you seen the picture?
Well, it's basically down now.
We have a notice form, we need to, we've got a notice form on this, Chuck.
I'm not taking nothing from nobody here, but most of the time, they're not paying taxes as it is. You know, they don't have the money to pay the taxes or they.
They don't care.
They've moved on or it.
Some of these people might not even live here.
Well, I think in this.
Hang on, one at a time, y'all. I'm going to wrap my gavel here. So let, let, let's not talk over each other because this is not, this is not a community meeting. Commissioner Robertson, go ahead.
Well, I mean, it, it's just like Garden Village used to be a pretty little residential place up there. I've got three or four houses up there, it's just, it's falling in. You've got kids, I mean, it creates snakes, rats, everything comes to it. And like I said, what they can get in, people goes in there and cooks this meth and everything else, and if they don't catch it on fire, it's condemned, I mean, it's contaminated. I mean, it's just, it's just an issue I think we're going to have to address and we're going to have to start somewhere on it.
So let's let, let's see if we can identify this one and we'll start picking them out. And we'll just contact the property owners. And I'll tell you what we ought to do is cite them for violation of solid waste ordinance. You know, haul them into court. I mean, it's.
Well, this is about, what Fabian, five minutes from a roadblock, so it wouldn't take them long to run over and just push it over.
Let them go ahead and knock it down because we need to, but it needs to be addressed because the people in that holler don't, shouldn't have to A, look at it and B, have that impact to their property values. So, all right, so we're going to move on. The next item, we've talked about the discussion of the ambulance service in Phelps. Next item is authorization for a contract with the Kentucky Division of Emergency Management for FEMA forty five forty, the February twenty twenty flood event and approval for the Judge Executive to execute all related documents. Mr. Stacy.
Judge, there's four projects associated with this flood. It, the total of it is about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And before we get paid for any of those projects, we have to have executed contract. Then we should be able to get our money from the state. They're all four small projects.
Okay. I thought I had it turned down. We'll forgive you this time. All right, is there a motion to authorize Judge Executive to enter into the contract as previously stated and for the Judge Executive to execute all related documents for FEMA forty five forty? We have a motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question, discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is adoption of revol, resolution for a lease purchase of a Caterpillar asphalt paver through Community Trust Bank and approval to Judge Executive to execute all related documents. Mr. Fannin, please come up. And I'm just going to short circuit this. We had previously obtained a quote from US Bank to finance this paper. We're already using the paper, we've laid seven and a half, eight miles of blacktop with it so far. And after we contacted US Bank, Mr. Fannin sent some information in and we received an email back that they were not going to approve us to approve the lease because of the county's bad audits in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. I think that is correct, Mr. Fannin?
Yes, sir.
So we get an email back after they told us that they would essentially finance it. And, you know, I've said all along that losing the county's credit rating has ramifications. Bad audits under the prior administration, there are consequences for that. It impacts your ability to borrow money and when you do borrow money, it increases the cost of that money. I am deeply disappointed in US Bank because US Bank didn't bother to look at our current financial situation, the fact that we have stabilized the county's finances. The county could pay for the paver, but we want to make sure that we don't jeopardize our cash flow because in the middle of the pandemic, we don't have a crystal ball as to what's going to happen. But Greg, in essence, what was the difference in the interest rate that Community Trust gave us versus what US Bank had previously quoted?
The quote that I had brought to the court from US Bank was for a one point four eight six interest rate over a sixty month term. We resubmitted the documents to Community Trust and they gave us a rate of a one point nine five. That is a difference of about a half of a percentage point over the sixty month term. What that, what happens then is, is this actually going to cost us another four thousand six hundred and seventy two dollars in interest over the sixty month term to finance this paper?
Well, you know, that's money that I wish we didn't have to spend. I do want to thank Community Trust Bank because they realize, and it really is remarkable given the fact that our credit was so bad a couple of years ago and the county was having to borrow money, I think it's, I'm, I'm, am I correct, Mr. Stacy, that the county was having to borrow money a few years ago to make payroll?
Right.
And it's very fortunate that we're able to get an interest rate below two percent, even with the, the county's credit history. Again, I want to thank US Bank. I am again deeply disappointed that US Bank did not do more due diligence on this. Nevertheless, we've had a good relationship with Community Trust Bank and we're going to continue that. It would be my motion to adopt a resolution for a lease purchase of a Caterpillar asphalt paver through Community Trust Bank and approval for the Judge Executive to execute all related documents. Is there a second?
Sit.
Who, who was that from? Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question, discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Greg, thank you very much on that. Next up is the awarding of bids. Greg, go ahead and please proceed.
Yes, we're, we're still in the process of acquiring vehicles for the Sheriff's Department as part of the three hundred thousand dollar drawdown from the LGEDF money. We have bought four vehicles so far. There are four more vehicles that they're wanting to buy. One of the last vehicles we bought was a, a two thousand twenty Tahoe from Bachman in Louisville, who's on the state contract. Bachman has several of these vehicles sitting on their lot that are identical. They have decided that they would like to have four more of these vehicles. The state contract price is thirty seven nine hundred and thirty one dollars and forty eight cents. If we bought four of those, that would be a total of one hundred and fifty one thousand seven hundred and twenty five dollars and ninety two cents. With these four vehicles and having them outfitted with the equipment that the Sheriff's Department needs, along with the other four vehicles that we've already purchased, that would bring that total of that LGEDF money to two hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and sixty eight dollars and thirty nine cents. I would like to get approval to go ahead and purchase these four vehicles for the Sheriff's Department, also the ability to get a check to be able to pay for them.
Is there a motion to purchase four Chevy Tahos from Bachman Chevrolet at the state contract price of thirty seven thousand nine thirty one forty eight per vehicle for a total of one fifty one seven twenty five point ninety two for four vehicles and approval to issue a check for payment of the same? Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett, is there any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Anything else, Mr. Fannin?
That'll be all, thank you.
All right, thanks, sir.
What, what color are these, Greg?
They're all black.
Good.
Fabian, you're next. Pike County Road Supervisors Report. For the Pike County Commissioners Recommended Road Maintenance for the upcoming period of time. Fabian, I know I was out with you guys yesterday up on Little Creek. I want to thank the special crew, the work that you've done starting this paving. We are going to hopefully be able to pave this fiscal year somewhere in excess of forty miles of county roads, hopefully closer to the, the blacktop. What, what did we get the blacktop for? We thought it was going to be about ninety a ton, what did we end up getting?
We're actually picking it up for seventy nine, seventy nine dollars a ton.
So that's substantially cheaper than what we thought it would be?
Yes, it is. Mr. Fannin had worked out on a, it was some kind of a fluctuating contract with them and it lowered our prices some.
All right. So for seventy nine a ton, how many miles do you think we're going to be able with the, with the money that we are going to be able to put together between flex, the regular budgeted amount and then the Economic Development Fund drawdown? Think it's going to be somewhere in excess of forty five miles?
I do, yeah. And just so far, we've paved about seven mile of that. But we, we are making good headway.
Now, here's what I would ask the folks out there, there's a lot of people who are wondering if their road's on the list. We're going to be able to pave about forty five miles, you've got eleven hundred miles of county roads. If your road doesn't get paved this year, it's not because we don't want to do it. But we only have a limited amount of money in the amount, I think it's fair to say that the amount of paving that we will have done this year, when you count the discretionary money for Ford Mountain, we will probably lay more pavement this year than probably at any time in the last ten years, than any year of the last ten years.
Oh, that has to be correct and it would go further than that. I've, I've never known of the county ever being able to, to lay this, this amount of blacktop.
And we fully expect to go to the Beshear administration and ask for help. There are a lot of roads in our county that need attention, we know that. We're trying to prioritize the worst roads in each commissioner's district. Some of these roads haven't had any attention really to speak of in terms of pavement in, some of them well more than twenty years.
Right.
And if you look at the pavement cycle we're on in terms of if we pave a road now, we probably have one of the largest or longest pavement cycles in the state, in large part because of the size of the county and the number of road miles.
And you know, just to add on to that, by, by you, the court buying this paver, it actually would shorten that somewhat, not a great deal, but you know, we're getting more bang for the buck if we do it ourselves. So you know, we're going to, we're going to add a mile about every, what, five mile?
Somewhere in that, every four and a half miles?
Somewhere we're going to add a mile, so you know.
We, we should be able to save enough money by paving it in-house to pay for the paver.
Oh, correct.
And then going forward, it's going to allow us, you know, I mean, if we're not having to pay somebody else to do it.
Correct.
It's going to be more miles of blacktop we're going to be able to put down.
And I would have to say, which you, you saw yesterday, our work, and I would have to say that, that, that crew is, is a top notch crew, they're doing a great job and I'll put them up against anybody, blacktopping.
Well, Fabian thing about it is you got a lot of.
Jason?
Got a lot of knowledge there on that crew.
We do, we have a lot of experience.
You got some, you got some talented.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a lot of experience there on that paving crew.
From blacktop to whatever. I, I was noticing that a couple of days ago, just looking around from truck drivers to, you know, whoever, just, you know, I'm not building one up, throwing one down, but you know, they've been around the, the block a little bit there.
The county's always paved, they just have not paved to this extent.
Right.
We've always had, so like you said, there's knowledge there, there's a lot of good workers. Like I said, I'll put them up against anyone.
And you're still, you're, you're not doing big wide hollows, it's still eight, nine, nine foot wide.
That's it.
That other, other companies don't have a smaller paver to leaks it out, but you know, we're saving the kind of money we're saving it, it's working for the people of this county.
Exactly right.
Well, the more money we can save by doing it in-house, the more blacktop we can lay.
And more people we can, more people we can affect.
I do have one road favor, I mean, you've looked at it, I know, but sometime this winter, we need to get up with Viola on that New Camp Road, remember?
Remember, I mean, you went up there and looked at how it's sunk down.
We do, there, yeah, Brian, Commissioner Booth, I'm sorry, had, was showing me, there, there's an issue there. They have, they had went up and replaced a line, and everywhere they've dug through the center of that road, it's got a sinkhole in it.
You can follow it from manhole to manhole, and that road does need repaid, but there's no need to go into our pavement until we find out if it's, their infrastructure's collapsing or what, because.
I did contact Columbia, not to, not to cut you short, but Columbia, and, and they were pretty much in favor of probably reimbursing us to resurface the Virginia, yeah, those streets over in that area.
Have we talked to anybody from the coal company at Big Hackney's Creek?
Monday, supposed to meet with them Monday, supposed to go up Monday.
Okay, because I mean, if these coal companies are doing the damage to the roads, we need to, to make sure that's addressed. Logging company that we talked about a couple of weeks?
I've not got a hold of, I was getting ready to mention that, I've not been able to contact him yet, but he does need to be contacted and see.
Yeah, he is on another county road right now, logging the Ed Bevins Road on Lower Big Creek.
So I want you, I, I want that to, let's make that a priority, because if they've damaged that road, you know, they need to pay to repair it. If you're going, it's the cost of doing business. If you damage the road, you pay to fix it.
Well, the coal company is held to that same standard.
Okay, so let's, let's check on that, that logging issue, okay?
All right.
So the other issue is we have the Road Department Progress Report and Scheduled Worklist that will be posted on Pike TV. So is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett, is there any other question or discussion?
Fabian, there's two situations we need to go look at whenever we get a chance, is Big Card and Kelly Mountain.
I agree.
Whenever we, whenever you can get a chance, I know we went up in Kelly Mountain a couple of times, and we went to Big Card, but that might be something we can do this, this fall to see what we, what our plan is for it.
Okay, sounds good.
I've got, I got a complaint on Rouse Creek we need to check out whenever we can.
Okay, I'll get with you guys and we'll go. All right.
So we have a motion as second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett? Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Mr. Stacy, Treasurers Business.
Authorized payment of expenditure approval list dated September 22nd and any other utility and telephone bills received before checks are run.
Is there a motion to authorize payment of expenditure approval list dated September 22nd and any other utility and telephone bills received prior to check run? Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett, any other question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Acknowledged receipt of the Treasurer's August 2020 financial statement?
Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Treasurer's August 2020 financial statement?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Last thing I have would be to acknowledge receipt of the Sheriff and the Clerk's 2550 reports for August 2020.
Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Sheriff and Clerk's 2550 reports for August 2020?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right, any other business, Mr. Stacy? All right, next item is Executive Session, is there a need? I don't see Mr. Maynard. Let's stand at ease for just a second. Jenny, can you find out if there's any personnel matters that we need to address? Mr. Keane, anything on litigation side we need to address, sir? Anything on personnel, specific personnel matters that we need to address?
I don't think so.
All right, Mr. Keane, please instruct the court and the public on the relevant provisions of the Kentucky Open Meeting Law as regards to Executive Session for specific personnel matters.
That'd be CARA 61810, subsection F.
All right, is there a motion to enter into Executive Session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Judge Jones?
Yes, we will stand in recess for Executive Session and will return upon call to the Chair. Back in Session, is there a motion to adjourn from Executive Session? Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Tackett, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson? Commissioner Tackett? Commissioner Booth? Judge Jones?
Yes. It is my motion to approve hiring Paul Smith Jr. temporarily as a loader at Solid Waste Area 1 at 2H rate of pay effective 9/3/20. Approval to hire Brian Bunch as a packer driver at Solid Waste Area 1 at a 3H rate of pay effective 9/21/20. Approval to hire Bill Tussie as a helper at the animal shelter at 2H rate of pay effective 9/18/20. Approval to terminate Luke Atkinson and Mison Livingston's benefits effective 10/1/20. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Robertson, any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson? Commissioner Tackett?
So on this, for, on this solid waste, on this solid waste thing, that's CDL driver, right? Okay. And that's what we got to have for that position? Okay, and there's no, none of the others? I mean, what I'm saying, they was hired COVID pay. The loader man was hired COVID pay. This is the only guy that's been hired as a CDL driver. Okay, all right, I'll vote yes on this.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right, we're going to go through this. Mr. Tackett, I'm going to ask you to come up briefly. Tell us where we are on the 911 funding. I know, has it stabilized since we took action?
Yes, it has, it has stabilized and seems to be doing pretty good. We, we're still holding it on with a number of phone lines that we have, and as those go down, we'll see a decrease in incoming funds, and that may be some time yet. But somewhere down the road, in the next few years, we're going to have to look at alternate ways to fund 911 system without relying on landlines and cell phones.
Just so the public refresh their memory, 911 is essentially funded by a surcharge on the landlines.
That's correct, yes.
And landlines have gone from about, what, 28,000?
Down to about 17,000.
Okay, so if that continues?
Then we, we need an alternate source of funding or another way to fund the system, and it could be, different counties do it different ways. Some counties put it on property tax, some counties put it on water bill, some counties put it on pair bills. There's different ways to, to look and, and approach the solution.
Keep us surprised on that, and we appreciate it. And let us know also about the issue with the ambulance service after you be prepared on October 6th to give us an update on the Phelps ambulance situation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Vanover, anything? Ms. Goff? Ms. Thacker, any word on the engineering, on study on the Pikeville Senior Citizen Center? All right. Mr. Kaiser, anything? Mr. Williamson, anything? Ms. Clevenger? Mr. Morley, anything? Come on up.
Just want to remind everybody about the Waste Tire Collection Event that's next week, Thursday, Friday, and half a day Saturday, in case there's anybody out there that hadn't heard about it yet.
So just to remind people, if you have waste tires, they're normally $2 for passenger vehicle tires, normally $3 for commercial tires.
Correct.
Thursday, Friday.
Half a day Saturday.
And half a day Saturday, you can take them to the Pike County Landfill, not the Landfill, but the Recycling Center, which is across from the maintenance garage. It's on the right as you go up Ford Mountain. And there will be no charge, and it's open to any member of the public. Businesses, of course, can't take advantage of it, but any individual can, whether the tires are on a rim or not. This is in conjunction with the State Division of Waste Management, no charge, and we encourage everyone to do that. It's much better to take them up there, drop them off at no charge, than throw them in the creeks and streams or over a hill somewhere, so thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, Mr. Ratliff, anything? All right, Ms. Thacker? Ms. Skaggs, you have anything? Mr. Fannin? Mr. Little? Mr. Stacy, anything else, sir? Next, we have the County Attorney's Comments, Mr. Keane. Assistant County Attorney's Comments, Mr. Downey, anything, sir? Judge Hickman, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Anything, sir?
No, sir, not today.
All right, we'll see you on Friday and talk to you tomorrow. Commissioner Robertson, we'll start with you, sir.
I just want to take a minute to think about Wayne T., what he did for this county, plus what he did for the city. I mean, him and Mayor Hamley worked close together on the cut-through, and Wayne had a lot of good ideas for this county, and he, he got a lot of them through, and I think a lot of people don't realize what he did do for this county. He had vision. He tried to make things better for Pike County that we're enjoying right now that a lot of people don't realize, and I just want everybody to keep his family in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tackett, District 2.
I've got a situation, Judge, I need to kindly explain to residents in this county up in, up at this Middlefield deal. I've had a lot of calls on this. I do have a call in to Jim Pruitt, supposed to be getting something set up. They've, it's, we had the lease, actually, you mentioned Wayne T.'s name, his last term, he, or he had, I think him and Jim Pruitt had worked a deal with DB Kazee on this property as a trail, a trail ride. And we, the previous court had continued it on, and we continued it on, and in July, we got a letter, if I'm not, if I'm, if this is right, that they was pulling our lease. They've been some things said that we're the ones that leased it to this outfitter. Well, we're not. They pulled our lease and has leased it to somebody out of Somerset, I think is what it is, Lost Mountain Outfitters, and they went up and blocked the roads. So I'm just letting the people know that we don't have nothing to do with this because we do not have that property under lease no more. Another thing, another situation is, is for the last 17 years, I believe, I was around that field trolling deal there when this first started. They have, they've had an autism hunt up there. It's brought in roughly 250 people a year. 1,500 to $3,000 a year proceeds go to autism. And they have, that was their running grounds. They didn't kill the rabbits, they just run them. And we, I have a call in for Jim Pruitt to see if we can allow, if they will allow them to continue this, because I mean, that's a, that's a good thing, is donating the money to autism, and that's quite a bit, plus, I mean, it brings people to our county, too. You know, quite a few, two good things, it's, it's not going to no longer be there if they don't have those running, running grounds unless they move to other strip jobs. And I know there are plenty of coal property, but it was just where the base was, their clubhouse was at Elkhorn City, and it was easy to run the Middlefield and do that. And that's all I've got on that at this time, and like Commissioner Robertson said, just everybody keep the Pruitt family in your, in your prayers and thoughts. He was a, was a great guy for the, great man for this, this county, not only this county, you know, he worked with everybody. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just to touch briefly on that, we had a lot of people call, even the newspaper called wanting to know what the situation with Middlefield is. We had a lease that was terminable at will. We had prohibited elk hunting there because it's adjacent to the Elk Preserve. And there's a significant tourism advantage to having, having that, having it there. Obviously, the owner of the property felt that it, you know, he could make money on it, county wasn't paying anything for the lease, so he had a right to terminate it. We can't lease property at the, you know, for what these guys can do, I mean, we, you know, we can't do that. And it's regrettable that that's what the property owner did, but you know, it's a capitalist country, it's, you know, it's his property, he can do with it as he chooses, and again, we didn't have anything to do with terminating the lease, and we wish they hadn't done that. We did make sure that the occupational tax has the outfitter signed up, and since now the property owner is leasing the property for a, for money, I have instructed Ms. Vanover to make sure that the property owner is also paying occupational tax on the proceeds of the lease. So we're going to make sure that, you know, if they're going to do business in the county, then they're going to have to pay what everybody else pays, so. All right, Commissioner Booth?
Yeah, Judge, I'd like to thank our employees that's been doing our paving and stuff and all, they're doing outstanding job, even over at, up Jason's Way, they've been paving, and over, they started over in the Belfry area paving, Danny and them has, they're doing outstanding job. And I'd like the rest of you, seem like this year, the county's lost several people from Judge Deskins to Wayne and Magistrate Barney. Seems like this year, the court, previous courts have been hit hard with death. But other than that, Judge, that's about all I've got. I look forward to us getting out and maybe getting a few more of these roads patched or paved, and hopefully we continue to do that maybe in next year.
Thank, thank you, sir.
I've got one more thing to say.
Yes, sir.
And, and we kind of leave them out, but I personally went down last week to the animal shelter, and you all, you all have it going on down there. I've got to brag on everybody that works there, it's clean, you have people coming and going, getting animals. I, I just want to, I want to brag on you all that. I mean, everybody needs to go there and check that out. You know, you don't smell the dog, the cat, it's, they, they keep it, they keep it clean down there.
And we've got, you know, a great facility, and I've been to other animal shelters that are nowhere near as nice and sanitary is what we have, and Lord, you do a good job, and we greatly appreciate it. Anything else from the commissioners? Several things to touch on. I did pass out, you should have a list of the equipment that is in the maintenance garage. As you can see, this is probably the least amount of equipment that we've had in the maintenance garage for repairs in some time. That was sent over to me by Mr. Justice this morning. I had a constituent that called and left a message that says the Belfry Senior Citizen Center has five vehicles and says that they think it's a waste of county's money, said five vehicles aren't needed. Diana, how many vehicles are over there, do you know, senior citizens? Come on over.
When we closed those two centers, we had like three extra vehicles, and Elkhorn took one of them because we're doing, delivering to Marybone, and, well, the Marybone Center And, well, the Marybone Center too was closed, but a couple of their vehicles really wasn't worth driving. So we've parked some at Belfry that we are gonna see if they are good enough to fix, but they're, they all don't run. They have two home-delivered meal drivers there. And see, when we were picking seniors up, we had to have a van to transport seniors, so it was always three that was being used all the time.
So just let this constituent know if they're watching, it's something that we are aware of. Suffice it to say that the senior citizens' vehicles, the programs' vehicles are not in great shape.
No, they, they could all be parked.
All of them, counting?
If there's 10 at a center, two might run.
And, you know, that's been a problem and it's something this court's gonna have to address at some point.
We are.
But if there are any vehicles that are no longer roadworthy, we need to be able to take those to auction or junk them out to get them off the insurance and so forth.
Yeah, we, we had about Jeff, I think, in the last auction, we had maybe three.
And, and we are looking at that, anything that's surplus or that's, you know, worn out, we are auctioning it every year. So just wanted to let whoever this individual was that was kind enough to call me, and we appreciate people giving us input on things like that, but we wanted to let them know that it has been looked into. Thank you, ma'am. On September 10th, I sent a letter to Mr. Robert Hoak, Senior Counsel, Government Affairs for Altus, which is the parent company of Suddenlink, advising them that they are in breach of the county's franchise agreement, asking for various financial documents. We have sent a record of complaints and we are asking Suddenlink to respond or else we are going to impose various fees and assessments against them in the nature of liquidated damages. We have not yet received a response and we will advise the public once we do. This is an ongoing problem. I do wanna let people know that the county's jurisdiction extends only to television service. We have no ability to regulate problems with internet service from Suddenlink or any other provider. That is strictly within the purview of the Federal Communications Commission. And if there is an issue with internet service, your only recourse essentially is to file a complaint with the FCC. So this is something we're continuing to work on and we're sort of taking the same steps that the city of Pikeville's taken. This is not, there's no easy solution to fix this issue, but we are gonna continue to press it in conjunction with our retained counsel lending. So I wanted to bring that to the, to the public's attention. In terms of the court, Mr. Maynard has provided me with information that the BOEMAG, we're still waiting on some additional information from the appraiser on the BOEMAG compactor that we used at the landfill that had a rollover incident. Fortunately, no one was injured. It is questionable if the BOEMAG is repairable. So we'll know more once the appraiser has some final pricing on the cost of repair of the AC system windows, mirror. The big issue, as the court has already been explained by Judge Hickman, is even though we don't think that the rollover canopy was damaged, the rollover canopy is only guaranteed for one rollover. And the method that you have to go through to make sure that the rollover cage is still crash-worthy is, or crush-worthy is a massive undertaking. You basically have to take it all the way down to the frame and it may well be that the cost of repair exceeds the value, so we're waiting on that from the insurance company. We have, to remind the folks out there that the US Census will conclude, the last date of participation is September 30th, 2020 at midnight. We are only about 60% in compliance with the census. That is a really low response rate. Census takers are currently going door to door, but as this winds down, there's only a week left. If we don't have, if we don't increase that number, it's gonna have a long-term negative impact on the county. So if you've not participated in the census, there's three ways to do that. One is online at 2020census.gov. You can call 844-330-2020. It's 844-330-2020 or by mailing in the return questionnaire. So please, if you've not done that, we need to do that as soon as possible and make sure that we have as complete of account as possible. I was hoping that with the pandemic that Congress would extend that deadline, that has not been done. And I'm afraid that Eastern Kentucky will see a substantial undercounting of our population when this is, when this is wrapped up. The next meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court will be on October 6th and we look, look forward to having that meeting. I think this was a very positive meeting, particularly as it relates to the lease with Big Sandy Healthcare. Of all the things that have happened in the, in the Peter Creek area in the last 20 years, certainly bringing a comprehensive medical clinic to the community will be one of the, one of the bright spots. I think it'll improve the quality of, of the health of the people in the area, it will create jobs and it is certainly a welcome addition and we look forward to a grand opening of that here when construction's complete. That being said, I'd like to ask, I'd like to welcome my good friend Jerry Huffman here today with the American flag face mask. Jerry, welcome, it's good seeing you. To conclude, I do wanna ask everyone to remember Judge Rutherford's family as well as Judge Deskins' family and the Varney family, Bobby Varney's family, we've lost three, two former county judges and a former Pike County magistrate and Pike County Board of Education member here in the last few months. We know it has been traumatic for all those families and ask that you remember them in your thoughts and prayers. Also, Brother Gary Hampton passed away. Gary was a regular Baptist minister, retired from Community Trust Bank and was a member of the Shelby Valley Volunteer Fire Department. Big loss for that community. You know, Brian hit that we've lost a lot of outstanding members of Pike County, Pike County citizens here in the last few months. And please, please take the COVID pandemic serious. It is not a political issue. After Ms. Riley left today, she sent a text that they had five cases already today. So that's 25 cases in less than three days. So the numbers are continuing to increase. And as I said earlier, King's Daughter's Medical Center, the CEO has released a statement that they are at maximum capacity. So it is important to wear a mask, wash your hands, socially distance. And Commissioner Tackett, do you have something? Yeah, the Pike, Pike County, Pikeville Independent Schools started back this week. Pike County schools start back next week. We're gonna keep a very close eye on the COVID cases as we move forward. And I know that Mr. Tremble and I know that Mr. Atkins are, are keeping a close eye on this situation as well. The safety of our citizens is our primary responsibility, the safety of our kids is our primary responsibility. And we're gonna continue to monitor the situation and, and hopefully we'll have some more information on the, on the trick or treat event and how that will be done, if it is done. I'm not gonna make a commitment that, that it will happen, but if it can be done safely, then we'll have hopefully a plan in place by October 6th. With that being said, Commissioner Booth, would you say the benediction before we entertain the motion to adjourn?
Dear heavenly Father, as we come before you again, watch over us all as we travel to our homes, dear heavenly Father, watch over the safety of our people, dear heavenly Father, and bless our county and our country as a whole, dear heavenly Father. And go with us, dear Lord, until we have another meeting, dear heavenly Father, and keep us all safe in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Is there a motion for adjournment? Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.